They're supposed to be sealed under a certain pressure thing? It's better to not change them.
Yep.
If you're correct.
Worked out well.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Elsworth School Board Special Meeting. We're going to have this meeting in before our workshop tonight. So please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Communications and correspondence, Dan?
I have none.
Any public participation can be sent to Elizabeth Alteri at ealteri@elsworthschools.org. Do you have any?
I do have one that just came in just a minute ago.
Okay.
This is from Mary Martel, fifth grade teacher at EEMS.
Okay.
This email is being shared as an educator, not the EEA president. These are my feelings and insignes alone. I have been teaching since September to the in-person, hybrid, and fully remote students every day, all day. In fifth grade, we don't have the luxury of a fully remote teacher as grades K through four and seven, eight have had. I am 100% in favor of the proposal to bring kids back full-time. I am, however, not in favor of offering the fully remote option. We need our kids back in school in person with a teacher, interacting and engaging in face-to-face discussions and learning. To continue that option is not the best interest of all kids, let alone the immense load it adds to our teachers' responsibilities. If we adopt this plan, I hope that there will be remote-only teachers hired to take over that responsibility.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Mary. All right, so item E, new business. Discussion and consideration of spring athletics. Mr. Frost?
Good evening. Thanks for putting me first on the agenda. I thought I would start tonight just with a quick recap on how winter sports have gone and some that are still going. So our indoor track team were able to participate kind of in a virtual format, running the distance events such as the 800 and the mile. They were able to do that on our home track. I got out there a few times, made a little snow throw, a bunch of the snow out of the way, at least keep one lane of the track open. So they were able to run in those meets and compare their times with other schools until the championship meet. We also added high jump competitions in local school gyms and in other jumping contests that were virtual until the championship meet. And we had a lot of kids successful in those. So indoor track, while it wasn't a typical indoor track season, we gave them something and the kids were thankful for that. Swimming and diving, the students competed again in virtual swim meets. So they swam all their home meets right here at the Down East Family YMCA. The girls' team finished as the PVC runner-up when we did the championship meet. Again, they basically took their times, compared them to other schools, and then obviously established the points and things. And when all was said and done, the girls' team finished as the runner-up. This is the best finish ever by the girls' team. So and we're only losing three seniors, so we're really looking forward to next year. And the boys' team actually finished third out of, I believe, there was eight or nine boys' teams. And that's with only five boys on the team. So again, that's something to be really proud of as well. Our basketball teams, the girls' varsity basketball team was able to get 12 regular season games in. They finished as the four seed and were hosting John Baps in the quarterfinals in the playoffs. We beat them. And then that, they went on to play Old Town and lost there, but again, had a great season and able to get through some games. The boys' team also played 12 regular season games, finished as the number-one seed, and made my nights kind of going into March very busy by hosting the quarterfinals against MDI, Old Town in the semifinals, and the Class B PVC final with Orno, obviously winning all the way through there and then going to Brewer and playing in the PVC A versus B matchup. So also to note, the JV boys and JV girls' basketball teams both won the Hancock County championships. So it was a very, very, very busy basketball season. Cheering, again, same thing. All competitions were virtual, which made it difficult for the girls to compete. And by that, what I mean is with cheering and even with swimming and indoor track, you're used to competing and having fans cheer on and everything else and watching the other teams do their routines for cheering. And that didn't happen this year. They basically performed for a camera three times. So it was very difficult to try to get that kind of hyped up and whatnot. But they had a great season. They competed in the Elsworth Invite, something that I just threw out to ADs as another opportunity to compete. And then the PVC Championship in late February, and they placed second as runner-up in the PVC, which is a great accomplishment. And just last week, last Thursday, they recorded their cheering routine. And we'll find out the results of that on this Saturday when they air it at 4:00. So we don't know, but they had a great season and looking forward to those results on Saturday. In wrestling, as you know, that was one of the sports that we were not able to kind of follow through with. We were able to hold two weeks of conditioning practices towards the end. And obviously before the state and the MPA acknowledged that they would not be able to have wrestling meets. I do want to publicly give special recognition to Matt Reed and Noah Hughes, who most likely this year, as long as they didn't have an injury, season ending injury, would have reached their 100th win. So congratulations to both of those seniors that are going off to big and better things next year. Esports, if you remember, we started an esports team. Very cool about esports. We were working with grant money, we were able to start this program. We have students that typically wouldn't come out for an athletic team that are coming out for the esports team. This team is coached by Jason Melvin, who's a high school teacher. We currently have about 12 students that are participating on this team. They meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays and play in different games, League of Legends and Rocket League. The League of Legends team is a regional team, so they're playing teams up and down the East Coast. Our first match, three weeks ago now, was against a team in Georgia. And it was very intimidating because it was a huge school in Georgia. We did not win, that's okay. But and then the Rocket League is an in-state team, so we're playing other Maine high schools. And this Thursday, we go against the MDI Trojans in esports, so we have a new rivalry there starting. So it's kind of neat to see that going. And it's also great to see these kids, you know, that you typically may not see on a field or in a gym coming out for something like this. So unified basketball started last week, which we're really happy about. We got that finally going, was able to get some gym time for that program. We have about 20 students that are playing, which is a huge number, we're really excited about. We currently have a home and away game scheduled with Brewer. They also just started. So we're looking at going to Brewer on April 12th and hosting Brewer on April 5th. And that program will finish up just the Wednesday before vacation. So we're really excited about that. And you should have seen all the smiles in the gym. It was like seeing your old friends again in the gym. It was just, it made your day. And lastly, volleyball, currently playing actually right now in Bucksport. We had almost 30 girls come out for volleyball because typically volleyball's in the fall. So we did have some girls that are kind of in between seasons and wanted to try it out. So we did create three teams. We have a JV two, a JV and a varsity team. They have a 10-match schedule. After tonight, they'll have three matches left, so they finish off next week. And then they're looking at having a playoff kind of tournament thing with the large schools in the PVC starting April 7th. So it was a very busy winter. And because of that, I want to publicly again give some thank yous. A lot of help this summer. Jen Berry and Franklin Brown ran the live stream cameras for all the basketball and indoor track high jump competitions and swim meets. And again, because we weren't able to have parents in these facilities, it was very important that that worked. And it worked well, and they both were amazing. Amy Poehler and Lindsay Corson for doing the basketball scorebooks. Monica McAndrews and the other volunteer swim timers. Lori Fortier for doing the basketball clock. We calculated that she did about 45 games in less than seven weeks. So and now she's doing volleyball. That isn't called the volleyball, so it was, like I said, it was, yeah, 45 basketball games in less than seven weeks is busy. Our custodial staff at EHS, again, setting up the gym, make sure it's set up on time, disinfecting the chairs during the games and putting it all away. Just want to thank them. Our coaches providing our students a chance to play, certainly a season like any other and hopefully not like any other going ahead. And then finally, thank you to our parents for their support. I know it wasn't easy. I was a parent. I have two sixth graders that played basketball for the middle school team. And again, not being able to watch them in person, it was difficult. So thank you for their support and cheering us on at home. So with that being said, if there's no questions about the winter, I'll jump right into spring. Okay. So spring, I think, is pretty easy. I actually always look forward to spring coming out of winter because, not that it's less teams. It's about the same number of students participating on all the teams, but it's outside. And it just gives us a chance to try something different. So some of the general guidelines, first of all, spectator guideline is changing, as most of you know. Effective March 26 through May 23, outside, you can have up to 75% of permitted occupancy. And then effective May 24, basically, it's 100%. And again, that's staying six feet apart still in those spaces. But we feel like that will allow us to basically have everybody that wants to be at a baseball game or a softball game there. Because again, you're talking about a huge space and just making sure people know where they can and can't stand is just the more important part. All spring athletes will have to wear face covering at all times. If able, home events will be livestreamed on the EHS YouTube channel. And in parentheses, I put kind of like that will be a challenge this year because we don't have Wi-Fi in the exact locations. We have the supplies and materials to do that, it's a matter of getting it up and going. Try livestreaming a home track meet when you have, you know, seven or eight different events going on at the same time. It's nearly impossible. So again, the good thing is we can allow spectators to be there. So hopefully, they come and enjoy the nice weather. Hand sanitizer available at facilities at all times. And transportation will be provided by obviously the ESD two and away events. Same bus procedures are being followed, just like as if they were in the morning and afternoon runs. And the biggest hiccup this spring is going to be, that's obviously going to be a problem trying to get kids to where they're supposed to be, allow them to play their after-school activities, and then get them home and try to do that all before it's dark. So I mean, as you know, as we're talking about moving back to school full-time, we're talking about multiple bus trips and runs. So we are getting creative with the schedule. We're looking at, now I used to be able to send softball and baseball together to play, for example, Herman at 4:30. Now we're looking at playing baseball at 4:00 and maybe softball at 5:00. So it will allow maybe that bus to drive up to Herman, drop off baseball, get back, take up softball, and then go from there. So that's the biggest hiccup and challenge this season will be doing that. Along with, you know, something like outdoor track where we're not sure how many athletes we'll have, we're maybe looking at multiple buses for a team to go to an event. The good thing with tennis is they usually travel together, boys and girls. And you only have seven boys and seven girls, maybe a couple alternates. So they can all fit on one bus and go to wherever they're going. So it will be kind of a different thing with transportation, but we'll work through it. So let's talk about sport-specific guidelines. And these are the same in the middle school as they are at the high school. The biggest difference is middle school doesn't have tennis. But they do have baseball and softball and outdoor track. So starting with baseball, softball, arm conditioning started this week. We are holding off to start either tomorrow or Thursday. But next week, we can start tryouts and getting into the batting cages and things like that. We tentatively have 16 games scheduled with a statewide MPA-sponsored playoffs at the end, which has been different than all the other seasons because things are loosening up and things are opening up that the state, again, obviously, this can all change, but the state right now feels like come, you know, the beginning of June, we can offer statewide, you know, heel point tournaments. So modifications to the sports of baseball and softball. Extending the dugout to allow for six feet between athletes, just like we did in the winter season and in the fall, like making sure kids have a space to sit six feet apart when they come off the field. So you're looking at extending those dugouts, not creating necessarily new dugouts, but seats outside the dugout. The good thing is with softball, they're behind a fence. At the middle school, they're also behind a fence. Baseball at high school is in front of the fence. So we're going to create a boundary, kind of an out-of-bounds line, that if there's an overthrow, that's now out of bounds and whatnot. For baseball, the home plate umpire will be located behind the pitcher. That's something a little different. Typically, they're standing right behind the catcher. And so this year, they'll be behind the pitcher. Softball actually will be behind the catcher, but they're going to be six feet behind the catcher. And the biggest reason for that is if that umpire was to test positive a day or two later, then obviously, the catcher would be, have to go into quarantine. And then any batter that would have to come, came up would also be in quarantine. So they're trying for that not to have to happen. And the difference between baseball and softball is in softball is a smaller field, so the ball comes at you faster. And I'm not picking on the umpires, but there's a lot of older umpires, so to move out of the way on a softball field would be very difficult. Switching out game balls frequently. No seeds, no spitting. That's, that baseball has seeds, but again, not this year. Pitchers cannot lick fingers. Instead, they're encouraged to use like a damp cloth, maybe they put in their back pocket. It's just something that they use to kind of get the grip of a baseball. And softball. Sanitizing equipment and frequently. And for softball, no gathering in the pitcher's circle. So sometimes you'd see them kind of throw the ball around after an out and all come in and kind of slap gloves and then go back to their positions. It's just they're encouraging you not to do that this year. Outdoor track. So we're hoping to start April 5th. If the weather cooperates, and they only add that little bit, because if you saw the forecast for Monday, we'll see, hopefully, it goes out to sea. But 12 to 18 inches of snow is not fun on the first day of spring sports, but.
But that's me.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, look at today and then, yeah. So tentatively, we have five regular season meets scheduled. We're set to host three of those, so they'll only be traveling two others. Along with the PVC championship and finishing the year with a state championship. Modifications to the sport. So there are fewer teams at meets to comply with the outdoor gathering limits. Typically, on a Saturday, we may host up to 10 teams coming to the track. This year, it's half that. Using the odd lanes when running events that runners stay in their lane. And then teams bringing their own throwing equipment and batons. And then finally, tennis. We're planning to start on Monday, this coming Monday, morning practices. They've always started at the Elsworth Tennis Center. In the first two to three weeks, they'll be inside of the tennis center from 6:00 to 7:30 a.m. in the morning. They'll be outside when they can get outside, but depending on whether they'll be inside to begin with. Tentatively, we have 12 tennis matches scheduled with, again, statewide MPA-sponsored playoffs for the end of the season. And finally, modifications to the sport. The home team will change the scorecards. Usually, you would flip whatever your score is, but just the home team's responsible to flip the scorecard. No pre- or post-match handshakes. It may be just taking your tennis racket and tapping each other, it's a great job. And then, one I thought you'd like, that players may not wipe their sweat with a tennis ball this year. So no taking a sweat and ball and wiping the sweat off your forehead. I didn't know that was a thing, but apparently, that's a thing.
Does that happen?
That happens, yeah.
Some of these things will probably stay.
Yeah, that probably could, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
From here going forward. You're wiping your sweat with the tennis ball?
Yeah. So I mean, that's the just, like I said, I feel like spring is pretty easy moving forward with. We're back outside, which is nice. And then obviously have all these modifications and guidelines to follow that the MPA has put out, so. Any questions?
Excellent.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm assuming in the stands, you guys will like mark where people can be and.
Yeah, yep, yep, absolutely, yep.
Very well thought plans.
Thank you very much, Josh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any discussion?
I think just big shout-out to those two wrestling seniors.
Yeah, absolutely.
Matt Reed and Noah Hughes. That's so awesome and so sad all at the same time.
Absolutely.
So big, big applause and shout-out to them for the work that they put in over there.
Agreed. All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve participation in spring athletics for 2020, 2021, consistent with the school sports guidance, general guidance and requirements for community sports activities revised March 12, 2021, and the Maine Principals Association guidelines for return to participation as recommended by the superintendent, EHS, and EEMS building administrators. Can I second that motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Josh. All right. Item two under new business is discussion and review of board communication to legislators.
So I was tasked at our last meeting with drafting a message to the legislators that would express our goal of, well, we express our, ask them to help us achieve our goal of getting students back into session full-time in person. And so the challenge for me was trying to figure out, and I just sent the, what I ended up writing, but if you can just, I probably should have waited a minute. But I'll pass out hard covers of it. But I just want to explain what went into the thing you just received, before you start reading it. So the challenge for me was coming up with a request that I felt would be effective. And by effective, I mean a request that the legislators would be likely or possibly, would possibly be willing to agree to and act upon. And I asked for some guidance from Jan. We talked about this a little bit, about how to craft a message and what the message would say. But I really kept coming up against the, I guess, obstacles of like, first of all, I don't, I feel like our two legislators have limited power to do anything on the state level to help us here in Elsworth on this particular issue. I didn't feel like it would be worth asking them to advocate for taking away the governor's emergency or the powers that were given to her to declare a state of emergency and to then persuade the rest of the legislative, the rest of their caucus to overrule what the Maine Department of Health and Human Services was saying, was telling us to do about this. So and their caucus holds the majority of seats in both houses. So that didn't seem like that was going to fly. But I still pursued this idea because I want to see, well, what else could I do? What else could I ask them? So I actually talked to both of them, Louis Lukini and Nicole Grohowski, and I said, you know, what can we ask you to do? That, and I didn't want to go beyond just like a symbolic ask, like some, make some big statement, but knowing that it's just a symbolic act, not something that could really result in any meaningful change. And we really couldn't come up with much. Though both of them, each of them, I talked to them individually, not together, but they each, you know, recommended that these kinds of decisions are coming from not only the governor's office, but really the Department of Health and Human Services. And so then, but I had good talks with them. And they both fully support, you know, what we want to achieve. And they both fully understand that, you know, the health and safety guidelines that prevent disease transmission, that there's some consequences to these that are, that affect the emotional and mental health of our student population. And as many people have advocated, you know, there is, there is a need to balance these two things. Because when you're talking about health and safety, there's different aspects to that. And certainly, mental and emotional health are very important, especially, and it's important to all of us in this room and all of us on the board and to Dan and the administration. So they understand that fully. And they, you know, their hearts are really breaking for what some of the families are struggling with. So anyway, then I, but it's a great conversation with them. Then I went to Steve Bailey, who's the executive director of the Maine School Board Association, and asked him, you know, Steve, what's your organization, you know, what are you recommending? And what do you think? And we had a great talk, but he said he would write the letter to Jean Lambrou, who's the commissioner of the Maine Department of Health and Human Services. So that's what I did. I wrote it to her. And we'll pass it around. I'll mark a copy to each of you. You have an emailed copy that we can work on together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And first of all, I'll stop right there and ask, did I correctly fulfill what I was tasked to do? I know it's not exactly what I was tasked to do, right? And I fully understand that. But I just couldn't find a way to write a message to our legislators that would be meaningful. So I went with this instead. I mean, the message itself could be, you know, we can certainly copy them. And in fact, Louis, when I talked to him again this afternoon, he said, yeah, I mean, perhaps you can copy us on this, but. And copy the governor and copy, you know, Dr.
So it could be sent all encompassed, just to.
Yep. But really, this is where, this is where the decision is being made at this, at the level of the commissioner. And even there, I know she's, she's basing her guidelines on what's coming from the U.S. CDC. So I think, and I can read this letter so the general, so the public will know what's in it, if you'd like. This addresses Jean Anne Lambrou, Ph.D., Commissioner, Maine Department of Health and Human Services. Dear Commissioner Lambrou, first of all, thank you very much for all you have done to promote the health and safety of all Mainers during the coronavirus pandemic. The people of our state owe you and your department a debt of gratitude for your commitment to a science-centered approach to health policy. I'm writing today on behalf of the Elsworth School Board to ask if you can see a way forward to allow students in kindergarten through grades 12 to maintain a distance of three feet while eating. Last week, the U.S. CDC issued revised guidelines that permit young people, under certain circumstances, to be three feet apart rather than six feet, provided they are wearing masks. This leaves school lunch as the one major limiting factor for many school districts, ours included, in achieving the goal of returning to full-time, in-person instruction for those families that want it, as opposed to the hybrid model under which we currently operate in Elsworth. We, as a board, understand that your guidance on this issue is based on the current scientific consensus around coronavirus transmission and what is in the best interests of public health. We only ask that you recognize the emotional and mental health needs of Maine's student population when weighing the risks of physical distancing and mask-wearing during meal times and balance these with the overall health risks to our population at large respectfully. And then I signed each of our names underneath it with our titles.
I think it's excellent.
Thank you.
I love that you pinpointed something to work on, really, with the lunches.
Yeah, because when Paul and I talked, it was, you know, where are those limitations that we come up with when we look at just our district alone? And Paul had a really good article that he shared with me that was based on a lot of research that's been coming out recently. And obviously, the changes with the U.S. CDC currently haven't changed in the state of Maine, but we don't know. They seem to change rapidly.
Very rapidly, yes.
So in knowing that, I think that was very well done.
And great. Yep. And I was going to say, I appreciate the fact that you went kind of, kind of above and beyond the ask to really like get to the purpose of what we want, we're trying to do, what we are hoping to do and what we're looking for, rather than just like a symbolic, hey, we're here, don't forget about us, but nothing is going to be impacted. Like, I appreciate that you kind of went beyond just the, just the basic of what you could have done. And I think that you're right. I think it going here is going to have more impact than it going to our legislators, especially if we can do it kind of all together.
Good job, Paul.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all.
Yes, and I highly appreciate that that last part. We ask you to recognize the emotional and mental health as well in addition to the scientific health that we're talking about more frequently.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. I think it doesn't hurt to send us and show our, you know, concerns or what we're struggling with in our own district. And then it's a voice that needs to be heard. And then we can, you know, see if we get a response or if other districts decide that that's something that they would encourage to do as well, you know?
And I can say, I would concur with all of you. I think it was very well done, a lot of thoughtfulness and a lot of research went into it. I can tell you that other districts are looking at the three-foot piece for lunch as one of the most significant barriers. It's not limited just to Elsworth. I think Paul has put that in here. But this may create an impetus for other districts to do something similar.
Yeah, I agree.
Dan, could you share this with other superintendents?
If the board would like me to, I'm happy to. If the board would like me to, I'm happy to do that.
I'll also share it with Steve Bailey, because he was, you know, he recognized very clearly that now that this, now that we have a three-foot rule for everything else, you know, wearing masks, that really changes, it, it'll, there are now opportunities for districts to, and every district is different, and every building is different, and classrooms and so forth, but it seems like now, we may be able to find, find ways to get kids back in to a classroom. But the one limiting factor, as Steve pointed out to me, was that it's the lunch, it's lunchtime. How do you do lunch? You can do everything else, and you might have to, you know, take, make, I'm sorry. Yeah, you might have to do some special things in some of the other, in some classroom settings, but with lunch, it's like, that's, that's the one big thing, so.
All the plans that were discussed at last night's committee meeting, if you eliminate a portion of the lunch challenge from that, I think it makes the planning a little bit easier.
It does, it does.
Certainly, if the board wants, you know, I know Steve Bailey, and MSBA and MSSA and MSMA have shared those types of things statewide. I can certainly, if you direct, or ask me to, share it with the Hancock County superintendents as well.
I don't see why not.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
If you'd like to make that part of your motion. And again, I put a motion down there for you because, you know, the, the ask, I guess that's the word, the ask of Paul was, something for the local legislators, so I drafted it in that sense. So if you want to consider modifying that recommended motion to reflect.
Commissioner.
How you want to do it, or Commissioner Lambrou, local legislators, and I think Paul mentioned a number of people that you might consider. But I think the structure of the motion would serve your needs.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we should send this to the CDC, too.
Well, the CDC actually operates under the, under the oversight of DHHS, so it's in effect going to the CDC when you send it to the commissioner. So that's the way I interpret it, anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve the written communication as presented and authorize the board chair to send to local legislators, Steve Bailey, the commissioner of the Maine Department of Health and Human Services, and for Mr. Higgins to share this with local superintendents.
I'll second that motion.
Kelly, can I just make sure, because I need to write slowly to make sure it's neat?
Sure.
So, local legislators.
Yep.
The MSBA executive director, Steve Bailey.
Yep.
Commissioner Lambrou.
Yes.
And local superintendents.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Bye, both.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Yes, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Very well done. Good work. Item three, consideration of PEPG steering committee recommendation.
And you've got a memo. This is from the PEPG steering committee, which met and talked about teacher evaluation. Certainly in the pandemic year, there were concerns about how that process would move forward. Committee met on a couple of occasions, had very thoughtful discussions, and are coming forward with a recommendation to do a couple of things. One is to eliminate the student learning objective, which is a database measurement. There was a belief, and I support that belief, that given the challenges of the pandemic, hybrid learning, remote learning, combined with in-person learning, would make that not a valid or reliable measure. So it would be to eliminate that for this year. Move forward with 2021 with probationary teachers following the guidelines as presented in the system, continuing contract teachers receiving one observation, completing a self-reflection, and having a post-observation conference with their administrator, which will involve feedback and completing evaluation summary page. And all completed while implementing a common sense approach and utilizing the rubric as currently written. And the common sense approach is based upon not penalizing any of our staff for things that are out of their control. There were some factors in there that talk about attendance of students and things of that nature. Those aren't things that our staff members have control over. So, and the third piece is to reconvene the committee over the summer to discuss the program and look forward. And again, the members of that committee were Lori Johnston, grade six teacher, Heather Ford, HCTC academics teacher, Jean Stackpole, EEMS GT teacher, Jeanne Kell, grade two teacher, John McKetney, science teacher at the high school, Dan Clifford, principal at the high school, Rebecca Wright, assistant principal at the high school, Erica Gabinelli, middle school principal, and myself. And I would note that Dan Clifford, Rebecca Wright, and I believe Lori Johnston were all part of the original committee. So it was really a healthy, thoughtful discussion, and I think they were pleased to send this recommendation to the board.
I recommend a motion that we approve the recommendation of the PEPG steering committee as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Oops, any discussion first, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
You were just anticipating that the level of discussion that was.
Item number four, consideration of requests for unpaid leave. And this has a potential executive session. We have two requests there, and then there's a potential executive session for item five as well. So it would be my recommendation that we go into executive session for these items.
I know this might be a little cumbersome, but my recommendation would be, you've got three items, you know, two under item four and one under item five, each of have, each that have the potential for it. Even though it's a little cumbersome, and we want to let our public know that when you come back from executive session, there's probably going to be a two-minute lag before the feed comes back on. But I would recommend that you do them individually. Do one, have the session, come back out, and take whatever action you're going to take. It is a little more cumbersome, but I think for protocols and procedures, it makes the most sense.
It does. I'm just wondering, in our workshop then, Dan, is there anybody that can be excused from the evening?
Well, I was going to say, our administrators who are here tonight, they do not need to be here for the budget portion of the workshop. I don't think they need to be here for the other item either. And by the way, I think that item is extremely well done. I think that'll be easy. But if the board is comfortable, I would think that our administrators would appreciate the opportunity to depart.
Absolutely.
Right? I think that would be.
Folks, we're not kicking you out, but.
Stay as long as you'd like. We'd like to release you from your pain.
And then the other members, if you don't mind stepping out, we can certainly have you come back in. Does that sound good?
I would say, once, once the executive, once the executive session is voted, you can, or you can leave now. But for.
But if you want to be here for the.